Meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Blair Sickland.
Here.
Vice Chair Jean Enright.
Here.
Secretary Treasurer Wayne Richards.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine Waldrin.
Here.
Commissioner Joseph Anderson.
Present.
Executive Director Emmanuel Almira.
I'm here.
Court Counsel John Camaro.
Here.
We have a call.
All right. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Additions, delations, reorganizations of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we do not have any.
All right. Have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Richard, second. Commissioner Anderson, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five zero. Prover minutes.
So move.
Commissioner Waldrin, second. Commissioner Enright, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five zero. Presentations and announcements.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we have Anne Messer, Executive Director of Friends of Manatee Lagoon, with a brief presentation. I'd like to bring her up to the mic. Pleasure.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm pleased to be here today and have this opportunity to speak to you about our newly-created organization called Friends of Manatee Lagoon. Just quickly, how many of you been out to our Manatee Lagoon Center? So we're your neighbors, right next door. And it was built, this fantastic center was built in 2016, 16,000 square feet on a five-acre property in proximity to the port, has over 150,000 to 200,000 visitors a year. It's truly a community treasure. I want to introduce Sarah Marmion. She heads up the leadership of Manatee Lagoon, and we work together closely. Friends of Manatee Lagoon, FOMO, is the charitable arm of Manatee Lagoon. And it was launched last year to give visitors and the local community an opportunity to be actively involved with the protection and preservation of manatees. For years, visitors have expressed a desire to volunteer, asking, "How can we get involved? What can we do?" And as it was, there was no forum or anything developed yet for people to be involved. And as a result, Friends of Manatee Lagoon was created. You may be also aware that in the past 18 months, we witnessed a staggering number of manatees that have starved to death due to the statewide deterioration of seagrass. And that's their primary food source. Additionally, boat strikes have been up on the rise, and I don't have to tell you that. Those of you that work in the port, you see the abundance of traffic that has passed through the port, through all our waterways. And a matter of fact, in March of this year, Florida surpassed the 1 million mark of boat registrations. A totally high number. I'm going to show you a short video that best explains the recent threat to manatees and solutions on what we, all of us here, can do to help.
Over many years, the level of excess nutrients in the water, such as phosphorus and nitrates, can create the tone of algal blooms. These nutrients can come from agriculture, as well as residential use, fertilizers, and other sources, and can have a toxic or harmful effect on the ecosystem, including manatees. Harmful algal blooms can create thick layers at the water's surface or within the water column, blocking sunlight from reaching sea grasses and aquatic vegetation. These plants need sunlight to photosynthesize. Without it, they can die. Manatees are herbivores, and without sea grass for healthy vegetation in their aquatic habitat, they have little to nothing to eat. During the summer, they can travel freely to find adequate forest. In the winter, manatees gather near warm water sites, such as power plants or springs. If there's not enough vegetation surrounding these warm water sites, they have to make the tough decision between swimming out to eat or staying at the warm water site. If they choose to stay in the warm water, they risk starvation. In addition to the blue-green algal blooms that crowd the water in the process of sea grasses, red tide algal blooms can kill manatees outright. Although red tide is a naturally occurring phenomenon, excessive nutrients in the water can fuel it and create super bloom. Manatees can inhale toxins when they collect debris air, or ingest toxins when they feed us sea grasses, which can result in seizures and drowning. What is this nutrition? First, the sources of excess nutrient nutrition should be prevented from entering our waterways in the first place. Next, conservation partners are working to restore sea grasses and aquatic vegetation and to clean up our waterways. There are things you can do to help, too. Contact your local officials to let them know how important clean water is for you and for manatees. If you live near water, skip fertilizing your lawn, or at a minimum, use less fertilizers and don't fertilize before it rains. Algal blooms happen all over the state of Florida and will call a long-term dedication to this. Without work together to help sneak up for clean water and help keep aquatic habitat for manatees, more and more can be pictured and have you to help at friendsofmanatee.org/AUJ.
Thank you. The, as the leadership of the Port of Palm Beach, the Commissioners here and others that have positions in the port, we can all work together, Friends of Manatee Lagoon, and those of you that work in the port. As a matter of fact, I had a meeting recently with Ron and Yuri, and we've come up with some ideas that I hope all of you will embrace once you learn about them. Please reach out to me with your ideas or suggestions on ways the port and Friends of Manatee Lagoon can collaborate for the betterment of manatees and also the betterment of our community. Thank you very much.
Are you a 501(c)(3)?
We are.
Anne, have you sent in the forms to see if we can get you some funding?
I have not yet.
All right. So go for next meeting.
I would introduce this to you, and then I will apply. Thank you for mentioning it.
And the other thing is, I mean, you have such a nice facility there. Have you guys had any fundraisers there? I mean, I would think that would be a natural to have a, some sort of, you know, cocktail dinner or something. Is that in the works, I guess?
Yes, it is in the works. And thank you for bringing that up also. On November 12th, we are hosting an evening called Soiree for Sea Grass, and you're all invited. Tickets will go on sale in August. We are looking for sponsors, too, at that event, and we'd love it if the Port of Palm Beach were to come in as a sponsor. And it should be a beautiful gala. We're going to be upstairs on the observation deck, and that is going to be a lovely.
Perfect. All right. Send us that information, and I guarantee some of us will be there.
That would be wonderful.
Good. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thanks. All right. Mr. Almira, anything else under?
No problem.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything under the consent?
Chairman, move approval of the consent agenda.
Commissioner Richard, second. Commissioner Enright, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five zero. District reports.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will start with our friends at Margaritaville at Sea. An update. On May 14th, you may remember, Margaritaville Head is first sailing from the Port of Palm Beach. And so far through June 3rd, they have had 11,490 passengers. Of course, that's in and out, that's counted twice. The average number of passenger per sailing is approximately 522, somewhat dismal. Parking numbers and revenue is as follows. Eleven sailings have produced about 1,400 vehicles, making it an average of about four passenger per vehicle. The net revenue associated with parking is approximately $42,000, according to the contract. Margaritaville at Sea's next minimum milestone will be July 31st, 2022. The volume expected at that point since the very beginning is 156,000 passengers. Our internal projections show that there will be a shortfall, so we can expect having long conversations with them to see what can be done. Moving on, Commissioners, Ozinga Cement. You may remember that they signed a 50-year contract with the Port of Palm Beach, an initial 20 years, and a couple of 10 years. The company's annual minimum guarantee starts at 60,000 metric tons and ramps up to 265,000 metric tons per year. The revenue translates to approximately somewhere about $1 million per year and about $50 million over the term. First, the company had to build a cement silo, and that's what you see in the video, which can store cement. It was implanted on May 24th, 2022. It took approximately three hours to complete the dome, which is being filled now with rebar and gunite. The facility will import cement from different countries and store it until transported to other locations to produce ready-mix concrete. Facility will be fully operational by next year, the summer of 2023. Incidentally, they are already paying rent of $29,000 per month. Last on my hit, let's hear is Teeter's shipping update. Later, you will hear from our attorney, where is, where are we as it relates to the lawsuit? But I just wanted to remind all of you of what we have done so far with the ship. We have, once the Countess became basically our property, even though technically that's not correct, we had to remove all the cargo from the vessel, defuel and de-water the vessel in coordination with Coast Guard and vessel insurance. We assisted ITF and CBP with getting the crew home, established a video surveillance security and fire flood watch system. Survey of the vessel was executed, established a pump-out system for water ingestion into the vessel, includes a pump system, generator, 300-feet of hose, and 20,000-gallon frac tank. Removed all the food contaminants, believe it or not, we've had a lot of food behind, and we had to clean out the multiple refrigerators and freezers throughout the vessel. We came up with a plan over a few weeks ago that received approval to move the vessel to Port 17 to maximize the overall impact of vessels at the Port of Palm Beach. Year-to-date, Commissioners, we have had to turn back three vessels as a result of having the Countess at Port 17. Now, with successfully moving it to the 17, we should not be experiencing any other type of congestion. Lastly, of course, is our AAPA schedule of events. There's one coming up in the port security in San Diego, California. There will be one for the Florida Ports Council down in Key West. This is an annual event that this year, since during COVID, they put a deposit, they could not get it back, so we're going to have it in Key West, as I mentioned. Great Bulk of Americas, as they usually have their meetings in Houston, Texas. And last but not least, the AAPA 111th Annual Convention Expo in Orlando, Florida. Commissioners, if there are any questions, we'd be more than glad.
Any questions? Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What is the end result of the end game plan? If you can share that without releasing any proprietary, because I know we're in a very litigious situation. What is the end goal for the vessel?
For the vessel?
Yes.
I'm going to be threatening on some legal.
That's why I said if you can.
Yes, sir. And I have a presentation planned that will address that. But, you know, the end game is, right now, we are the custodian of the vessel. We are not the owner of the vessel. We are moving forward now with the process to get ownership of the vessel. And the goal really is to sell the vessel so that the new owner can take it and to wherever they deem appropriate. That's the number-one goal in the federal lawsuit right now. And I'll get into it in my presentation, a little bit more detail about that, because it's a good question.
And just one follow-up question, and we're making sure we memorialize all of that information and the expenses that we are incurring.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes.
And we will, all the expenses we're incurring, from attorney's fees and costs to security, all of that is being very closely tracked by staff. In fact, the numbers have been placed in motions before the court. And one of the reasons we moved for an emergency motion to take possession of the ship was the cost is about $34,000 a month.
Yes.
And so we told the court, I'm sorry, a week. I was wrong. It's, I have here $34,279 weekly cost of custody. The point is that in a short, relative short period of time, the cost of maintaining the ship is going to exceed the value of the ship, and that's why timing is important here. There's also been an appraisal on the vessel as well, so that we know when we're going to get fair value.
Okay. Thank you, and I look forward to your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anything else, Board Engineer?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you might imagine, this month's activity is focused on the progress with the Port of Palm Beach New Master Plan. Both virtual and live sessions have taken place, led by our master plan consultant, Moffett Nickel. During this month, we have met with nearly every port tenant, most local government agencies, and participated in two major public hearings on the master plan and received some excellent participation from the public. Moffett Nickel put together an excellent system of hybrid meetings to accommodate virtual participation, as well as highly productive in-person discussions. The general republic of the surrounding cities and municipalities has been very engaging and seem to appreciate the ability to work directly with our consultants on how our port will move into the five, 10, and 20-year plan in our future. The public seems to understand the constraints of the port's size, but recognizes that the port and our tenants have found a way to overcome the logistical constraints and continue to make this one of the most efficient ports in the United States. The master plan has also vetted and confirmed the major items to be upgraded or newly-built as part of our port infrastructure development program, which we'll be taking action on tonight. Special thanks goes out to my fellow directors, staff, tenants, the consultant efforts to make this a successful master plan and incorporate everyone's ideas on how this port should look and operate in the future. We are on schedule for a draft plan to be presented in coming weeks, so all participants can understand and provide constructive comments to make this the best master plan the port has contracted for in the last 20 years. The public can view the recorded meetings on both the port's website and the project website, planportofpalmbeach.com. In addition to the in-person meetings, we are also gathering feedback through a master plan survey that closes on July 7th. The survey is available online. Dickey Consulting Services will be handling gathering survey submissions at the weekend's Juneteenth parade in Riviera Beach in addition. Other important issues, you may remember that recently authorized the purchase of some very sophisticated GIS equipment to supplement our asset management plan. I'm pleased to announce that our infrastructure asset manager, Keith Leggett, has begun GIS data collection, first on our waterfront assets, which are most important to us to collect data on right now. The start of this program will result in a better understanding of our assets' life cycles and better control of maintenance and inspection to ensure assets in the best condition possible to serve the port's needs now and in the future. In other business, the port has recently received final surveys from the dredging done by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, showing as-built conditions after the recent dredge event, and these soundings will serve as the pre-hurricane soundings for comparison if we suffer a hurricane event this year. We also have our port survey consultant standing by for the immediate after-storm surveys, should that occur. And you might remember that by the actions of our consultants, the Corps of Engineers, port staff, the Port of Palm Beach is always the first port in this area that's open by the Corps of Engineers. This action is critical in storm seasons to allow uninterrupted service to our, by our tenants, as a major supplier of food and supplies to the Bahamas and Caribbean. We're very fortunate to avoid any damage from the June storm and didn't have to do and take any action there. One thing I can tell you is that we dredged about 300,000 cubic yards in the project that was just completed. Unfortunately, we didn't get everything we wanted to because bad weather. The port has already funded and allocated enough funding to dredge another 180,000 cubic yards next season, FY '23. So we're lucky to have that already programmed, and we'll be finishing up this, and hopefully we'll get to, once a year, scheduled dredging with no emergency events. And that's it today, guys.
Any questions? Very good. Thank you. Government Affairs report. I know we've got a brief summary. Richard, you have a quick couple of minutes.
Yes, Mr. Pinsky. Chairman, Commissioners, there's, FINE is on the agenda today to bring to your attention two items. One is an update for the Palm Beach County proposal to reconfigure the docks at Peanut Island. As you recall, we, when we negotiated and leased the Coast Guard and historic properties, part of it was for them to work towards reconfiguring the dock so it would not interfere with the Turning Basin. They applied for a FINE grant, which will be on tomorrow's FINE board meeting up in Cocoa Beach. The drawings are in there. Director Almira and I asked the port attorney, John Fermeri, to please review the grant request to make sure that it was consistent with the lease. And John, and we all concur that, yes, they're simply asking for the funds to, $175,000 to fund the design, which still has to come back to the port, to Director Almira to approve and for you to look at to make sure. The other item is tomorrow on the agenda is also an application from, actually originating in City Riviera Beach, for a mooring field, which will start just immediately to the south of our Turning Basin and basically shoot across like this. So all of this would be a, except for that, would be a mooring field on the west side of the ICW.
What's a mooring field?
A mooring field? Good question. I thought we'd. Being in a nautical environment, I thought everyone knew that. So boats can anchor and moor. An anchor is terrible for the bottom. Mooring uses a mooring ball that folks tie up to. And in a city like West Palm Beach, Riviera Beach, cannot remove anchored vehicle, anchored vessels unless they have a designated mooring field. So what many communities do is they designate an area for mooring balls to be installed, and then they can remove vessels that are doing damage to the bottom through anchoring. And so that's the purpose of a mooring field. This one is rather aggressive, and will have, between Riviera Beach and West Palm, as many as 160 opportunities to tie up to a mooring ball.
I mean, who's in charge of?
This application's being done by the operators of the Riviera Beach City Marina on behalf of the City of Riviera Beach.
Okay. So people can just moor their boats in a mooring field?
Well, they would have to go to the Marina operator and you get permission to go to a mooring ball, and they charge money.
Okay.
It's parking, it's basically parking your yacht.
Yeah.
In an identifiable location.
But it doesn't affect anything that we've got?
This mooring field to the south is just, goes right up to the Turning Basin, but does not interfere with the Turning Basin.
So 175 boats?
Between here and Riviera Beach. I don't know the exact number. I have it, but I can remember it's a number of them here, and then in Riviera Beach is actually a quite intensive mooring field.
Yeah, it sounds.
Commissioners, they're there now, you know, there's boats.
There's some, but it's not a mooring field. That's exactly what's happening. Vessels are just anchoring.
Right.
They don't have any mooring balls to tie up to. Mooring ball goes actually submerged below the bottom, and so it does not impact the seagrass or the bottom at all.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. And so, in essence, this will be environmental-friendly, and this will be definitely a proactive step to mitigate any damage or continuous damage.
That is, that is the intent. I was only bringing attention, not to what's going on in Riviera Beach, but that the same application will be impacting the area across from the port, but I've double-checked, and it does not touch the Turning Basin.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioners reports. Anybody have any? Okay. All business litigation, Port of Palm Beach update.
Mr. Chair, that's just a brief, if I may, just real quick update. As you all are aware, we have two pending actions, one in state court, dealing with the real property, and the second action is in federal district court, dealing with the vessel, the Monarch Countess. As to the state court action, on May 24th, we had a hearing before Judge Kerner, and he has entered a judgment of eviction, which means, as of now, the port is in control of the property. The port can secure the property, keep others from entering the property, and is now free to establish a process to lease the property. You know, the issues there are going to be, and this is going to be a continuing challenge, is there are, there's equipment there on the property that has value. We filed a motion with the court to gain control of that property, and the judge's position is basically, that's a post-judgment issue. In other words, first, get a judgment on your damages, all the monies that are owed, and then when you execute that judgment, you can attach property and sell the property. And there, there's a lot of value in the property. Mr. Almira has an accounting of what's on the property. So in the state court action, again, the eviction judgment is in place. We have, we now have control of the property. We also filed an emergency motion for injunction to have the property that was taken off brought back. And again, the judge's position there is the same. You know, those are post-judgment on damages issues. You can go after anything they own, wherever it happens to be located. So really, the next step now, which we're preparing, is a motion for summary judgment on the damages count. So that would be the monetary judgment. Once we have that judgment, we can execute on it and begin the process of taking possession of the equipment on the property and selling it. On the federal district court side, there, we filed an emergency motion for expedited interlocutory sale. We wanted to just immediately go and sell the boat. There are a number of notice provisions, so we filed the motion on May 19th. There is still a few days left for Teeters and Monarch to respond, so the judge entered an order requiring a response to our motion. No response has been filed as of yet. In fact, the deadline to file a response has passed. So we are going to refile on, on June 20th, we're going to refile our motion for interlocutory sale of the vessel. I spoke to the Admiralty lawyers today. Keep in mind, this is a, it's a bit of a process, so even if our motion is granted, we just can't turn around and sell the vehicle. There's the seafarers, there's other interests, you know, the wages, health costs, any of that, that has to come off the top and be satisfied. Once that is satisfied, we can dispose of the vessel. I am told the courts tend to go towards a public auction-type of process. We can request something akin to a private sale or some kind of traditional procurement process. I'm told that's going to add time to the process to get the court, to get the hearing scheduled. Right now, these hearings. Right now, these hearings are at least six to eight weeks out to get a court hearing. There's been a great deal of interest in not just the property, but also the vessel. I've received calls. I know port staff have received a number of inquiries. We haven't really put out any notice, but there's, there is a lot of interest. So my hope is that once we're successful with the motion for the interlocutory sale, that we're going to get a lot of interest and hopefully get top dollar for the vessel. You know, we're going into hurricane season now. The Coast Guard will not allow us to move the vessel somewhere else until unless we actually have a destination that is acceptable.
Makes sense.
That would be, yeah, so that's, so that's still in play now. You know, there are the custodial expenses that I've been talking about, you know, are significant. So our top priority in the federal case is to get control of that vessel so we can sell it. Just in terms of the numbers, there's been an appraisal made of the vessel, which I think is in the $200,000 or $300,000 range. We've also been, it's been represented to us by others that there are higher numbers out there. I'm not sure if it's just for scrap value or what, but there is a lot of interest. So that's, that's going to be refiled on June 20th. So that's kind of a quick overview of the two cases. And obviously, if you have any questions?
Right, I know we want to go in specifics because it's obviously under litigation and, you know, I just found out before the meeting that, you know, they haven't filed bankruptcy. They still have their attorney. So they've got, you know, they're still, I wouldn't say not cooperating, but they're still in adversarial position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you can share, and just in some of the periodicals and reading, there is a much more operable ship, from my understanding, that's currently in dry dock. If you can share this without, you know, revealing our position, but on that particular ship, there's a second ship?
Yes.
Are we looking to somehow another?
So the answer is yes. I mean, we, because that ship is on land, once we get our, what I call the money judgment, the judgment on our damages, we can go after anything that is owned by the corporation. So whether it's a non-homestead piece of property, the equipment that's on site here for the ship that you're referring to, all of that is fair game. That would be a writ of execution. You know, anytime you get a monetary judgment against a corporation, then step two is to execute that judgment and take possession and sell those goods to satisfy the monetary judgment. And we are aware of that vessel and don't know the value of it. We haven't been able to put a value on it, but that would be fair game in our rate of execution.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fermari. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Any other questions? Last thing is that I assume that our staff is looking just in case there is a hurricane coming, that we have some idea where we're going to move the ship to or who's going to do it. I imagine we're working on it. Good, that's what I want. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney. Next item would be our transfer of unspent funds for, to switch over, I guess.
Commissioners, as you, I'm sure remember, we did a very exhaustive Phase I and Phase II environmental survey of the Ozinga parcel, which was found to be clean. And that was done by Kim Lee Horn. We have funding left in what was approved by you on that work order for Kim Lee Horn. We'd like to repurpose $6,880 to begin what is a little more than a Phase I environmental. Phase I, as one of you commissioners understand, is mainly a record search. This will be more onsite inspection. We're asking to repurpose $6,880. And then once we know what's out there and have a better handle on exactly what we will have to do for a Phase II environmental, because there are numerous containers full of waste oil and things like that out there, we'll be coming back to you for a Phase II work order for Kim Lee Horn.
Okay, we have a motion. Commissioner Richard, second commissioner. So this is moving it over to the Teeters and doing the environmental study on that?
In the Teeters parcel, yes.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Okay.
Speak.
Oh, well, we finally received the contract for the PID this past week and I cannot imagine, well, you probably do not know what we have gone through and actually on a daily basis, the gentleman I'm about to introduce and bring up is calling Marad to find out exactly why we were not getting this contract and we finally received it. So I want to bring up Rick Farren. He is with Trans Systems. He and his colleagues worked behind the scenes and assisted us in securing not only the grant, but actually getting this particular contract. Unless I did not read this correctly, but I believe that the contract is good until 2029. So that's the project.
Okay.
So with that, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Mr. Rick Farren?
Come on down.
Well, I'm delighted to be here, Mr. Chairman, with some good news and members of the Port Commission. As Manny introduced me, I'm Rick Farren. I'm with Trans Systems and I'm pleased to present the port with the very long awaited Port Infrastructure Development or PID grant agreement. You may be aware that Trans Systems worked with FDOT District Four for about three or four years to prepare three successive planning and feasibility studies for expansion of your rail facilities so that you could maximize the rail capability of the port. We used those three studies to ultimately produce a PID or Port Infrastructure Development grant application back in 2019. With a lot of push from your executive director and also from your federal members in DC, working with the Office of the Secretary of Transportation, the port was awarded a $13.5 million grant in 2020. And you were the only port in the state of Florida to get a grant like this. This grant will cover the significant expansion of your existing on-dock intermodal rail facility, a new non-containerized cargo gate, a new multilane automated containerized cargo gate, and some significant improvements to the roadway systems, internal roadway systems on the terminal. What this will do, ultimately, we believe from doing a static analysis, that this will increase your throughput capability from about 45,000 containers per year running in and out by intermodal rail to about 95,000. So more than doubles your rail capacity. The total cost of the project was estimated at $26.5 million. So you're getting 50% from the federal government. The other 50% has been pledged by other non-federal government agencies to include the state and the port. And since the announcement of the award over a year and a half ago, I've been working with Carl and his staff and Ron and his staff and the Maritime Administration to meet the multitude of requirements they put in our way to getting the grant agreement. And we have done so. We've done so expeditiously and thoroughly. And today you have the grant agreement that was recently received from the project manager at the Maritime Administration. And the agreement, when it's executed by the commission and by the executive director, will allow the port to be reimbursed for what we call eligible project costs. And those eligible project costs are things like engineering, design, construction, and construction materials. And the details for the frequent reporting requirements and also instructions on how to request reimbursements are contained in the agreement itself. It's important, as I finish up here, it's important to realize and remember that the PID grant under the administration of the Maritime Administration is very similar to the FSTED grants that you've been getting for years from, from the state of Florida. These are called reimbursement grants and they require you to front the money and then go back for reimbursement. And reimbursement will be paid to you, in this case, on a rate of about 50% or 50 cents on the dollar. Now, I would also tell you, and I'm sure you know this, that your staff here at the port has a long and a very strong history of doing the financial administration for grants, both at the state and at the federal level. So I don't see any problems there. Now, I know that Mr. Almira and Mr. Coddington and Mr. Baker are not only pleased to have the agreement finally in hand, but what it does is it also signals the beginning of the preparation of the design criteria package. And this is really the beginning of what I believe, and I think anybody who's involved, who has been involved with this project realizes as really the future defining project at the port for at least the next 20 to 30 years. So thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
No.
So what we'd like to have is the approval so that we can proceed.
Oh, we need to vote on this?
Second.
Commissioner Richards?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Waldron. Any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, I think I was the one that moved.
Oh, okay. All right. Commissioner Anderson?
Okay.
All right, new business.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Michael Williams, your Director of Finance. This item is to approve the fiscal year '21 annual financial report, audited report as recommended by the board's audited committee. I'm here with Tanja, Ms. Tanja Davis, from a partner with Davis and Associates, and she will talk about the audit engagement. Before she does, I'm going to take a little overview of the financial itself for this current year. Excellent. Thank you. The port in 2021 had a very good financial year. All things considered, quite honestly, was a very, very good year. And I say that because we had COVID-19 for full 12 months. Just to orient everyone to this slide, starting from your very right, far right, that's the adopted budget that the board adopted for fiscal year '21. And if you look at it closely, we adopted a budget of $17 million in revenues and a net income of about $600,000. Moving to your left is the FY '21 audited results. And we're showing FY '20 for good comparison purpose, but because fiscal year '20 and '21 were both COVID impacted, we're showing fiscal year '19 as a baseline for you to compare our results to 2019. And then for a broader reach, we're showing 2011 so you can see how the port is performing over a broader span of period. As I mentioned, the port performed well and, and, and that's with revenue staying the same as it was in 2020. That's significant because we had in 2021, we had 12 months of COVID, whereas in 2020, we only had six months of COVID, but yet revenue stayed pretty much flat. Where management was able to be more impactful was on the expenditure side. We were very deliberate. Actually, I was not here at the time, but the management at the port was very deliberate in controlling expense. And if you look at the slide there, we actually reduced expenditures by over $1 million compared to your adopted budget and also compared to the previous year, 2020. So in essence, by controlling expenditures, the port saved about $1 million, too, which drops right to the bottom line. A few months ago, actually while I was here, the port received $4,590,000 in state of Florida coronavirus recovery funds. Of those funds, $4 million, approximately $3.3 million was allocated to fiscal year '21. So the $3.3 million plus the $1.2 from the operation, we had a net income of $4.5 million. And that's significant. And I say this because if you take out the $3.3 million from the state, the one-time funds, we still made $1.2 million as compared to our budget of $600,000. So that's, that's 100% increase over what was budgeted. But more so, when you look back at 2020, we made $200,000, so that's a significant increase, but we're not quite back to full recovery. I say we're about stable. That's where the port's at right now as far as 2019, where net income was over $2 million. And that's where we really need to get to. Next slide. Thank you. This next graph is, is really summarizing the port's revenues. And I look at it where the revenues for the port is in really three buckets, if you will. The top line is an aggregate of all of the three buckets, cargo being one which is constitute all your tariff items. The next item is rent, which is long-term leases, and finally cruise business, which is passenger and associated parking. When you look at the 2021 numbers, the port cargo is growing on a compound year-over-year increase at a strong almost 7% annually. That's pretty, pretty good. Rent is growing at 5%. That's pretty solid. And where we fell short this year was obviously COVID-impacted cruise business, where revenues dropped by 92%. If we did not have such an impact, and obviously everyone knows that the cruise business was basically shuttered for almost the entire fiscal year. That's why you see those results. If the cruise business was not shuttered and they get back to, let's say, the 2011 numbers, we would be looking at annual growth of revenue of almost 5%, which is very good. If you look at, the cruise was to get back to 2019 revenue numbers, which were about $4 million, the overall port revenues would be exceeding $20 million annually. And that's, that's the target that we need to get back to. Next slide, please. This slide here is really about efficiency. It's one of the more simplified matrix in finance that you can look at. It's really is about operating margin. The blue, the blue blocks are basically your revenues and the red ones are your expense. The wider the gaps between the blue and the red, the better you are. That is really that simple. And a port of this size and complexity, you want to be at about 50% operating efficiency. I can tell you, looking at the history, the port is really at mid-40 to higher 40 percentile as far as efficiency, and that's really good. If we were to get the cruise business revenues where it needs to be, clearly we would be above 50%. So, next slide, please. This slide here is really about net income and losses. And I went back to 2008, not by coincidence, but to really tie back to our esteemed executive director, his tenure here at the port. As he entered his last year with us, I thought it would, it's a good reflection to look at the performance since his tenure. And as you can see, coming out of the depression back in the 2008 period, the port is projecting on the right path. And, and so I felt this was compelling enough to say that if anything else, you're leaving us in good hands as far as the finance is concerned. That concludes my quick high level. And I run through this because I want to get Ms. Davis up here to talk about the audit engagement itself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I am pleased to be here to present the results of the fiscal 2021 audit and I want to thank you for entrusting SDA to be the port's commissioners. Must also thank, before I jump into the slide presentation, must also thank management, the executive director, and especially the finance management for helping us get through this first year audit and to be able to present to you tonight. And kudos to all of you, in particular management, for holding the line on expenses so that the port is able to present a healthy net income in your annual comprehensive financial report in a year that most would consider to be a very difficult year. And if we can go to slide two. I'm going to quickly move through slides two, through, slides through to five because a lot of this information you will have seen in the actual report. And so I'll just pick up highlights. As you're aware, we audited the financial statements for September 30th, 2021, and according And so I'll just pick up highlights. As you're aware, we audited the financial statements for September 30, 2021, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and the provision of a chapter of the Auditor General and the Florida Single Audit Act. The financial statements are listed in the bottom of this, but you also have it in the report. On Slide Three. Management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements that are presented to us. And it's important to note that this extends to you all as the governing body. Our responsibility as auditors is to render an opinion on the financial statements. However, we did assist in the preparation of the financial statements. We did so making sure that we maintained our independence throughout the audit and our professional skepticism, even though we did assist in this function. On Slide Four. Actually, Slides Four and part of Slide Five. There are some other schedules included in the financial reporting package on which we performed limited procedures. The basic financial statements, we did full-scope audits. The other schedules that you may see only require us to perform some limited procedures to make sure that they are in line with what we did audit in the basic financial statements. We also applied procedures to assess financial condition. And as I'm sure you all know from the results of the audit and from what Mr. Williams just explained, there were no issues and no concerns that the port might be in a state of financial emergency or even had deteriorating financial concerns. We also examined your Florida statutes with related to, as relates to investments in public funds and your investment policies, and there was no issue there. On Slide Five. We did consider internal controls over financial reporting and your major projects. We do not audit internal controls, however. And so we don't render an opinion on controls. We look at the controls, we perform walkthroughs on the controls that are reported to us, and we do minimal testing just to determine the nature, timing, and extent of our audit and to see if there are certain areas that we need to spend more time on during the course of the audit. But you will see that in everything that we looked at. The audit results and the final reports are very, very good, excellent. The auditor's reports were issued on June 8. We finalized it after meeting with the Audit Committee on June 8. And so therefore, the port will meet your required commission, submission date of June 30 to the state of Florida. The audit results, and this is probably more important to you all than anything else, and this is on Slides Six and Seven. The audit of the financial statements, you received an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements that you see in the reporting package. It's the best type of opinion you can get. With respect to internal control and compliance on financial reporting and on your major project for the state, there were no matters of non-compliance that came to our attention and needed to be reported to you and no deficiencies in internal controls that needed to be reported. And as I mentioned, what you see on Slide Seven, you did not meet any conditions indicative of a potential state of financial emergency or deteriorating conditions with an unmodified report on your investment in public funds. Required communications to governance, these are items that we are required to report to you as a governing body. And again, I will highlight as I go through. On Slide Eight. The significant accounting policies that the port adheres to are in Notes One to the financial statements. There were no transactions in there that lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. And significant transactions were all recognized in the proper period. Regarding significant and sensitive estimates, all of the estimates were considered reasonable. We're required, on Slide Nine, to identify to you sensitive and sensitive disclosures. And you will see that they are included in your notes to the financial statements. The most sensitive are listed here. All of the disclosures are neutral, and they are consistent with previous years and consistent with other entities, and they are clear. There were no uncorrected statements or what we normally call adjusting journal entries in the current year. On Slide Ten. We had no difficulties in dealing with port management. And as a matter of fact, you know, in the first-year audit, we request a lot of information because we're building our audit files. The information that we requested was provided to us in a timely fashion, and it was complete. We had no disagreements with port management. On Slide Eleven, and this is the last slide. Your auditor's report, certain of the auditor's report are intended solely for your use and for state, the use of state agencies. And even though they are supposedly limited in use, they are a matter of public record because you are a governmental entity. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Questions?
I have a question. I just want to make a comment. I'm really pleased on your report and also the report of a financial person, Mr. Williams, and your report. And I thank you for your services and dealing with us. It was hard to get to this place
Thank you so much.
Where we are now. But thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Mr. Williams, this is your first year. The numbers helped you nicely, but I really enjoyed your presentation and how you, and just in how you spelled it out for us. So job very well done. Hopefully, we'll be this nice to you in the years the numbers aren't as great. But, but job well done, and very good job to our auditors as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? The only thing I'd like to add is that, I guess, to Mr. Williams, the money that we actually earn, that's like a one-time deal. So it's, we should be expecting every year to see if millions of dollars just kind of show up. Is that not the case, or? So I'm asking you about the reoccurring, we're not going to see funding every year from, like we got most of it from COVID, I guess?
Yes. To answer your question, we received $4,059,000 from FDOT, of which $3.3 was allocated to fiscal '21. $800,000 will be allocated to the current fiscal year we're in.
How much?
A million, you mean?
Eight, eight hundred and seven thousand.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, approximately. But you're right, those are one-time, one-off-type deals. The effort is really to control expenditures, which we have been doing, and looking at opportunities such as with the Teeters parcels and other parcels within the port to grow revenues. And again, as I mentioned previously with the cruise business, if that gets back to its relevancy and the things that were happening pre-pandemic, I think you'll see the port's revenue exceeding $20 million annually.
Right. And I know you didn't mention it, but we always like to reiterate that we do this without taxing the port community. So is that not the case?
That is the case.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson.
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Williams in the presentation. And thank you for the way you articulated it. And I do agree, and I concur with Mr. Commissioner Sicklin. And also, within that million-dollar savings, that also was attributed to the, you know, the lack of definite resources or expenses such as security and those kinds of things. So as that money dissipates, that $4 million, and then we have to also be cognizant that the expenses will grow as those services start to increase as well with the ship.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move approval of the Port of Palm Beach District Annual Comprehensive Financial Report with the independent auditor's report.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Richards, second. Commissioner Enright, any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Carrie is five to zero. Thank you both very much. Comments for the public? I have no cards. Okay, comments from the board? Catherine, anything? Jane, Wayne, Joe.
I have, thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, I just wanted to see where we are with the, I guess, in our last meeting, we were speaking about bringing back some type of RFP or RFQ or invitation to bid concerning the Teeters' property. Where are we with that?
What we have done, Commissioners, you have requested the contact for the contract copy of the contract for the Teeters' property. And as you just heard, now we can start looking at possible replacement. Although, I have to mention to all of us, that may be the law, and we'll obviously will follow it. But operationally and to practicality, it's not easy. There's over 113 containers, 70 chassis. And I'll be working closely with our attorneys to see when we'll be able to dispose, not dispose, but actually sell, because there's a lot of money there. And once we get that clear, then, plus the fact that we're also conducting some environmental testing. So perhaps by next month, we'll have, obviously, a clearer picture.
All right. Okay, so we're going to receive some direction or that we're going in next month's meeting?
I hope, yes.
Okay. And also, I just wanted to give accolades out to Moffitt and Nichols for the outreach that they did to the City of Riviera Beach Park Manor Neighborhood Association. They did a marvelous job, and I wanted to thank them for the outreach and their continuing. And also, too, they have follow-up, and I spoke to some of the members of the organizations, and they were very, very impressed how they follow up with certain phone calls or certain questions of the different constituents. But I just wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. All right. I appreciate it. All right, if we have nothing else, our next meeting will be July 21 at 4 o'clock. Okay. Roger.